For audience members, we ask that you be respectful of all candidates. These questions that you will hear tonight have not been shared with the candidates in advance. Both candidates who made it to the November runoff in this board are with us this evening, which actually can we give them some love because they also get lots of asks to spend time and so showing up here is a testament to the importance of and the recognition of the power that sits in this room. So, thank you. Our last request to our candidates is to please go as slow as you can. I know we only have two minutes, but we do have people doing live interpretation and any of us who have attempted that know how difficult that is to do in real time. So let's try and give them a little bit of grace so that the folks who are listening and have a chance to follow along in the conversation in real time. And then lastly, let's get started and let's have some fun. All right. Thank you. We're going to start with introductions and we'll turn it to you first. You have a microphone.
You want me to use? Can anybody hear me? Anybody hear me?
Use the mic, yeah.
Okay. How about now? Okay, let's turn it on.
Yes.
Excuse me, may I make an announcement?
Sure.
I think it is a different, that's good. Someone can answer the question if you need some interpretation if you are to pass. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, still? No?
Nope.
I have it on.
Is Mercury in retrograde?
All the way on. Here we go. Good evening, everybody. It is really a great pleasure to be here. I am so excited to be sitting here next to Sherlet and with you all. I'm really, really grateful for having the students in the audience as well because this is where the power comes from. My name is Khalid Alalim. I was born and raised here in South Central Los Angeles, over here in the Hyde Park area. I am a proud graduate of Cleveland High and shortly after I graduated from high school, I went into the military to become an Army medic. I did that honorably for 11 years. I came back home and I was really disgusted about what I was seeing in the neighborhood. Of course, I graduated in 1985 and you know by then the gang wars, the drugs, everything else. It was just getting real crazy out here. And I just got a chance to understand what organizing was all about. Met a couple of folks, old school revolutionaries I've been blessed to have been a part of and it was from there that they helped me to start my family and instill in my family a sense of values of always being civically engaged and staying brilliant and understanding that education is the key. Thank you.
Thank you.
My mic is on. I think there was a portion of the, here I go doing stuff, for the audience. We should give them their rules, so that's after.
Oh, I think, go ahead.
I was debriefed, sorry. The teacher and me. Sorry. Like they gave us an assignment. Okay. Good evening and good afternoon. My name is Sherlet Handy Newbell. I stand before you really encouraged to be here, to be with you guys all today. I am a proud graduate of Dorsey High School and I am here because of the community. I have been a part of this community, born and raised off of 26th and Simran, grew up, went to 24th Street School Elementary, graduated from Dorsey and proud daughter of immigrant parents who came here with a vision that education was the answer and I believed them. And went through public school system which allowed me an opportunity to go off to college, which being the first graduate in my family to go off to college. But that was met with a lot of hiccups along the way because I lost my mom when I was 17. Having to make these decisions was hard. And so here I am now, a proud graduate and LAUSD mom as well. I have two young boys in the school, in Board District One, and someone now who has come as a teacher, a coach, a dean, and now an educational policy advisor for Board District One, ready to serve and to champion for our kids here. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you for your introductions. We are going to now shift to our Q and A. So as a reminder, you will each have two minutes to respond to the questions. Our first question is focused on nonprofit partnerships and thinking about a lot of the organizations represented in the room tonight who are essential partners in addressing the diverse needs of students across LAUSD, offering services that range from academic enrichment, college access, to health and social and emotional wellness. These organizations really do serve as a bridge. They help bridge the opportunity gaps particularly for underserved communities and increase the district's capacity to support those students. Given the critical role of these over 260 nonprofit providers, how do you plan to protect and strengthen these partnerships ensuring that nonprofits continue to be a valuable resource for our students? And Sherlet, we'll start with you.
How do you protect and serve that opportunity? So, because we do have options for our small businesses and nonprofits to come and work with our students, it is essential to continue to provide spaces to educate them of the process to work with such a large school district. That is one of the things that has caused hindrances with our partnership is to make sure we educate our partners, whether nonprofit or for-profit within our community. But as to the question, making sure that those spaces are available, making sure that we have bootcamps to be able to educate them, making sure that we follow up. That is real critical within our school district because oftentimes folks are lost within the gaps and not able to connect. And so because they provide so many resources for our students and our families, it is essential to continue to keep the pipeline and the communication fluid so that those can operate together. And so what we have done at Board District One, which we want to continue, is open our doors to make sure we walk through the process, explain the process, and make sure that they are able to fulfill. And then partnering those agencies with the schools in which need those resources. Thank you.
Yeah.
Nonprofits are critical to helping supplement what we're trying to do in the Los Angeles Unified School District. In order to get the transformation that we're looking at, I agree with Sherlet, that there has to be a process in which they understand how they can engage not only the students and the local school, but the community as well. Because so many of these nonprofits have the ability to help service the community in ways where LAUSD falls short. So I'm working with a couple of organizations right now that are more geared towards workforce development, youth workforce development. One of them is called Getting Pioneers. Getting Pioneers is strictly geared towards getting students into the pipeline of space exploration. Another one is called Shades of Blue. Shades of Blue is helping to pipeline youngsters into the aviation field. I have met students as young as 17 on the course of getting their commercial pilot's license. We are talking about career development that will help push back against some of the gentrification and help support some of these immigrant families that can come out of poverty so easy if we have these types of relationships.
Thank you both. Switching gears a little bit to talk about digital equity and the digital divide. As you know, the digital divide has taught us that families in low-income communities pay more for slower internet. This existing inequity hinders students' ability to participate in modern learning and I think we saw that particularly at the height of the COVID pandemic. This year, LAUSD invested $10 million to provide free internet for nearly 63,000 families that rely on broadband and tech devices offered by the district. Shout out to that investment. LAUSD should be commended for that, but that is expected to expire next June. So our question is, how would you work to provide more long-term or permanent solutions that ensure Black and Brown families have access to reliable internet at home? And Khalid, we'll start with you.
We really need to get the profit-driven motive out of what we see here in our communities that we essentially need. Verizon, AT&amp;T, I mean, I could tell you right now, I still have the most premium service and it is just the most raggedy of service that you could ever have in terms of internet. And it's amazing. They charge so much that a lot of families cannot afford it. And I applaud LAUSD for having, you know, taken a step to help provide that. But it's not going to be enough and we need to make sure that we get on our legislators, you know, our council people. And then again, let these nonprofits come in to help us out as well because the cost is too much, the infrastructure is just not there to help sustain it. And really, I believe it's a special interest against our interest in making sure that our kids, our students, our families get what they deserve in terms of internet service. Very good question and I appreciate you bringing the fact that LAUSD did have funding for this. Ways to continue this is to build partnerships, as we mentioned before, with our legislators, with our county supervisors, which championed part of the funding for the program, Delete the Divide. And because of that, we were able to have the resources we have. So it's to extend that to make sure that the legislators understand that that is necessary, that we shouldn't cut it because if we cut it, then we do create the divide. And so we want to continue to build those partnerships with our legislators, like the county supervisors, to make sure that programs, this stay in place. And one of the pieces with that, many may not know, was that some of the use of the internet was not being afforded because many people did not know that there were options out there, that it was free and available. And so often when we don't use the resources that are available to us, then they say, you don't need it. And so that's the thing as well, is for us as a community to expand and use what is being provided as resources for us to correct the situation, as we mentioned, to delete the divide. So, thank you.
Thank you. Onto the really fun and wonky stuff, school governance structure type, et cetera. As you both know, there are different models of public schools in LAUSD, such as magnet schools, pilot schools, advanced study schools, and nonprofit charter schools. Charter schools are public schools that are overseen by LAUSD but operated by nonprofit organizations. What role do you believe these nonprofit charter public schools play in delivering education to high-need students in Los Angeles? Sherlet, we'll start with you.
The role is critical because it is important, as we mentioned charter and we mentioned how charter came about. If you know the history of it, '93, charters were created to be innovative. If they're innovative, providing something that's new, different, many of our students need that. How we meet the needs of every student will be different. And so to be able to evaluate our schools, to see and make sure that they are innovative, are they providing and meeting the needs for the individual in which they reach out to. And so there's many schools that are, you know, language immersion schools. There are schools that are doing projects by design, you know, they're just project-based schools. These are important because we need choice. Our students do need choice. Everyone's not cookie cutter and we're not going to sit here and say that it is. And so it's an opportunity for these schools to be able to provide that with the less restriction in order to be able to meet the needs of our students within our community and giving them an option to do so. I was happy that they came about, but I have been disappointed in the way that the model has been performed. It was a novel concept because it gave that autonomy for communities and students to have that flexibility to actually engage in student academic achievement. But students got left behind. Our special needs students got left behind. Our at-risk youth got left behind. Teen pregnancy youth got left behind. There's conflicts in terms of making sure that there was space allocated necessary for both schools to function. And it's these discrepancies that need the type of oversight, the type of real assertive oversight that will make charter schools successful and keep traditional schools from collapsing. And so that is one of the ideas that I will make sure is a priority because it's all about the funding. It's all about equity. And if we do not have the funding to support our students and if we do not have programs and policies and the oversight in place to make sure that these programs and projects are successful, then we have what we have today: low enrollment, fighting over locations, and a community that's fragmented.
Thank you. Appreciate you both. A little, a question from us on equitable funding and transparency around funding. So, over the past decade, the School Equity Needs Index has grown by millions of dollars. However, at the current moment, we see wavering support for this equitable funding tool and still a deep need to protect its current funds and distribute the more, distribute more money through the formula. If elected to represent District One, a district that historically has seen a lack of equitable investment by LAUSD, what would you do to protect the School Equity Needs Index and its continued implementation? And we'll start with you.
School site councils, the parent advisory committee, our leadership councils are the key to making sure that when any funding is implemented and it's at the school site, that first and foremost, there's a program for that funding to be used and then we need the type of leadership that can help get those programs instilled. I have had the privilege of serving on, you know, having four kids that went through LAUSD, sitting on the majority of a lot of school site councils. I was Dr. McKenna's representation on the parent advisory committee. So when the LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan, LCFF, Local Control Funding Formula, all started coming into place, I was one of those parents that was out there putting posted notes on the wall to try and make sure that our students got what they needed, our schools got what they needed in terms of making sure our students were successful. Unfortunately, we always ran into obstacles and those obstacles were leadership and the lack thereof. So my priority is to make sure that I continue that mission, that I continue reaching out to those parent advisory committees, D-LAC, E-LAC, making sure that school site councils understand how to function. And then, you know, have a candid conversation with a lot of administrators that seem to, I would say, push back against a lot of things that the community and the parents and the students would like to see implemented. That's an excellent question because it's sending funds, as we know, we need in order to make the schools thrive. Part of the issue is educating not only the members of our community, our schools, but our board members to understand the budget. Part of it is not understanding the budget to be able to make the decisions that are needed and to allocate the funds where they need to go. And so one of the things that is important as a board member is to express the need, to break down what it means for each entity of our budget and to understand it in layman's terms, to have, you know, budget understanding, quote unquote, for lack of a better word, for dummies. So that we can understand exactly where the funds are needed and where they are and then to understand statewide and federally where these funds can be and can be spent. Unfortunately, we operate from what is told and not what we know from a state view or a federal view. And understanding that will help us work collaboratively with our school site council that can be able to advocate for the findings to be placed in places that are necessary. And again, every school is different and to be able to advocate for each school in such a way from the governance stance of that school. So it is first to educate, not just self as a community, but to educate the board as well as understanding from the federal to the state funds that are allocated to our school sites.
Thank you both. As a reminder to our audience, if you have questions you would like to ask, please hold up your index card and someone on the team will come and grab them for you. Significant and diverse student population in LAUSD. Providing our EL students with linguistic support and culturally responsive teaching is essential to ensuring their academic success and full participation in their respective classrooms. How will you monitor English language progress, English language learner progress, to minimize the risk of EL students becoming long-term English learners? Sherlet, we'll start with you.
So there are assessments which help us to delineate where our students go and when they achieve certain milestones to move from one category to a next. And I think those milestones have been helpful to advance our students from one stage to the next stage. And so making sure that allocations are set aside to do just that and to be able to monitor it and to be able to get follow-up and feedback school-wide as well as district-wide to see how that progress is going, to see how students have moved and whether or not it's working, and to go back to see what works and what doesn't work. Because oftentimes we'll put in something and we'll try it for two years. Okay, we didn't see what we wanted to see within two years, but what did we see within those two years? To be able to make adjustments to make sure that students are not in a particular place or lifelong learners in no one space. So we want to make sure that we have assessments that go direct to the issue, to be able to give us feedback, to be able to say whether the student has moved and whether or not it works and to be able to challenge that within a two, three, to four-year lifespan of those assessments. Why our students cannot speak more than one language boggles my mind. We have foreign countries, especially those within the African and Latin American diaspora, that can speak more than one dialect. And I believe that it's because they have a cultural relevant curriculum that allows identity to be brought forth first. In other words, I know who I am and I know my language and my culture and my heritage and my history. And I believe that when you have a cultural relevant pedagogy or curriculum, that you have the ability to easily teach a student a language within a language. In other words, if I speak Spanish, I can kind of have a Spanglish-type curriculum that allows these students to grow within their own language, but also learn a foreign language like English. So this is where I believe things like the Student Needs Index can play a pivotal role in making sure that there are supports and resources and especially the personnel. We definitely need more teachers' aides, we need more librarian aides, we need more information technology, especially in this day and time. Doesn't make sense. We got phones that can translate language now. So why are we still having difficulty teaching children English?
Thank you both. One more question from me before we turn it over to our parent and student leaders and then general Q and A. Just a flag for the team, we have another question up here near the camera. Somebody can come grab that one. Thank you. So, since the pandemic, we have seen youth facing concerning rates of mental health crises. Some Black and Brown students in District One have expressed feeling a lack of support around mental health in their schools. They've also expressed that students are facing issues like bullying, fights on campus, drug abuse without receiving the proper help they need from school staff. As someone who hopes to represent this area, what would you do to address these issues? And we'll start with you, Khalid.
Thank goodness for our wellness clinics that are on our campuses right now. We need more of them. We need to make sure that they're supported and resourced. We need more social psychologists. We need to get more into the science of social-emotional learning. These are the ways that we can help get into the community and have talks, candid talks with families about what they're going through, the different types of insecurities like food, housing, death in the family, drug addiction, alcohol addiction. These are some of the issues that we have to push back against because it deserves to be a disconnect. We focus so much on ground zero and well, we should, what's going on in the classroom. But we tend to forget or just ignore what happens when a student leaves school or when the student is on their way to school. And those are elements that have a profound effect on learning. So if you're not eating and you're trying to sit in the classroom and learn and your head is banging and your stomach is growling, you're going to have issues. If there's something going on at home that there's no one to talk to or be able to get the resources that's necessary, medication, or just even simple therapy, these can pose a problem to learning. So I think holistically, we need to insert our wellness clinics and allow them to engage in more and more of the relationship between teachers, students, parents, and the community. And lastly, we need to definitely make sure there's more personnel at the school who have that.
Thank you. Sherlet?
This is a real good question. Wow. So, part of it is changing the narrative in the Black and Brown communities to understand the need for the resources available in our PSW, in our counselors. Many of our families do not believe that talking to counselors can help solve issues. And so it needs to start with small groups, it needs to start with families, changing the narrative that it's okay to talk to someone, it's okay to receive those services. Another part of that is our technology. Since the pandemic, the increase of use of cellular devices have really challenged and traumatized our youth as well as our adults. We have now used cell phones to communicate and create some of the, what was the issue there, the beliefs, the fights. We recorded, we see it again. Back in the day, you did not have to take home with you the girl that didn't like you. You didn't take her to your bedroom. You can take her to your bedroom now with your cellphone. And so it's unfortunate, but we as a community have to come together to work with some of the policies that are in place to remove some of the things that create the issues that we are now facing with cell phones. And with unfortunate, the narrative that we don't need counseling, but we do. And so let's as a community come together to understand the benefits of such resources.
Thank you. Final call for questions from the audience. Now we will have questions from LAUSD students and a parent. First up, we have Alejandro Casillas, who is a student leader with communities in schools of Los Angeles.
Good afternoon, candidates. My name is Alejandro. I am in Hamilton High School that is in District One. Chronic absenteeism is a growing issue among students and I know personally, some students struggle to make it to school every day. I also know how hard it is to do schoolwork just by missing a few hours at school. Students simply want to know that teachers and adults care about why we have missed as much school as we do, as much as they care about us being present. My question to you candidates is how do you, how would you work on fixing key factors to, that contribute to chronic absenteeism? And how you would work with parents to keep us students coming to school every single day?
Wow. Absenteeism is a huge issue. One of it is having the professional develop for our educators to understand, to meet the students where they are, when they do come. And to be able to go the extra mile and to work as a village within our schools, which we do go out to households to understand what's happening within those households and bring the resources to help mitigate the situations that are happening, whether it's childcare, whether it's, you know, not having clean clothes, whether it's, you know, not having transportation. Meeting whatever the need is because every situation is different. A student may not have a ride, so we've created bus stations within three to five miles from your school, you can have transportation. Maybe childcare. We have to look and see what other resources are available to be able to provide childcare for the individual so that they're not providing childcare for their younger siblings. And then again, making education engaging. That's part of the professional development for our educators, to engage our students, that you don't want to miss that class. Because if I miss that class, I miss out on what I need to learn for that day. And so that's part of professional development for our educators and making sure that our educators are treated like professionals so that they come to work engaged and the cycle continues. And so it is not a cookie cutter situation, and you'll hear me say that, but it's And so it is not a cookie-cutter situation, and you'll hear me say that, but it's meeting the needs of individual students and families and communities where they are.
When I went to school, it was fun. It's not fun for students anymore. What are they going to school for? Sit in the classroom and be indoctrinated constantly with testing, standardized testing, a Eurocentric way. They don't see themselves, you know, in the world whatsoever. And this is what I hear when I work with organizations like Students Deserve, and I'm sitting among real social justice warriors in Alliance to Reclaim Our Schools. This is what we talk about. You know, there's a reason why we created magnets and STEM and STEAD. But unfortunately, it's been a disconnect, because it's just a matter of just sitting in class and regurgitating information and then taking a test. When I said that I am affiliated with organizations like Hidden Pioneers, imagine learning about space exploration somewhere where you can actually touch, feel, read, and see those types of issues, those types of things, that you should be involved in. So when I went to school, I mean, I had drafting, I had electronics, you know, I had woodshop. What do we have for our students right now that gives them a sense of purpose, identity? You know, protection is everything. I definitely believe that a community-based safety plan should be initiated. We have those programs to stop the bullying. Mike Fuhr was proud to, you know, convene a Blue Ribbon Commission to come up with alternatives so that schools are safe, our students feel welcome, involved. So these are some of the issues that I'm going to revisit, and I'm going to stand tall on that type of opposition coming from our superintendents that are opposed to these types of programs.
Thank you both. Thank you, Alejandro, for that question. Up next, we have Amora Jones with Community Coalition. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Amora Jones. I'm a senior at Mayo Arts High School in Board District One. In the past year, Superintendent Carvalho attempted to return school police to campuses despite the 2020 board... Hello, my name's Amora Jones. I'm a senior at Mayo Arts High School in Board District One. In the past year, Superintendent Carvalho attempted to return school police to campuses despite the 2020 board resolution that moved them out of schools, which is confusing because they don't even help at my school. The board also committed to a community-based safety alternatives like safe passage, restorative practices, mental health support, and de-escalation. Do you think alternatives to police should be central to LAUSD's school safety plans? If so, what will you do to ensure the district remains committed to a comprehensive safety strategy rooted in community-based safety alternatives?
It's a powerful question. It's a simple answer. It's called leadership, that which Superintendent Carvalho has yet to demonstrate. It's real simple. Allow schools to be incubators of creativity and ingenuity. They are not mini-correctional facilities. We want our students to come to school feeling safe. But if they knew they were coming to school to learn that which would give them success in their adulthood, a lot of the issues that they're facing on campus, the bullying, the online issues, you know, a lot of that would diminish if they were busy learning about becoming successful, as opposed to just being indoctrinated and overly tested and marginalized. I mean, when you see an imposing figure, and then you see and hear on the news, you know, someone getting choked out, someone knee on their neck, a woman being shot in the face in her own home, you feel worthless. And so what are we doing to instill that sense of purpose, that sense of revolutionary spirit that we all knew, we all grew up on, those of us that are a little bit older, a little dazed, they hear? We need to bring that back. We need to let our students know that they are loved, they are wanted, and they are in a position to be successful if the grownups in the room allow that to happen. Takes leadership.
For our board to be able to support each and every school for what the needs are in that school. Each school has a different need. Board District One has a vast demographic. We go from Gardena all the way to the west side of Carte Circle, Overland, Palms. Every school is not the same, and each school needs an opportunity to create a campus-based safety plan for that community, which involves all stakeholders, meaning the principal administration, meaning the students, the faculty, and the community members, to be able to voice what is needed to make sure that school in that community is safe. And so that is something that needs to happen, because the state mandates that we have a comprehensive safety plan, and each school should have one today. And for the students and parents in the room, I'm going to encourage you to go to your school site and ask, what is our school's safety plan? And make sure you get a copy of it, because if you don't, then let us know. Let us know at Board District One, because we want to make sure that it is being created by the community that it affects. So that's how we continue to invest and make sure that our schools are safe, because we're getting the words and voices of everyone in that community and at that school site. And so moving forward, that's the best plan for our communities to be safe, and working with community-based organizations.
Thank you both, and thank you, Amora, for that question. We will now have a question from a parent leader, Kelly Bedford, an Innovate parent leader.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Bedford. I am a longtime parent of this district, 26 years. I've seen lots of things come and go, and it has been a ride. I'm also a member of Innovate Public Schools, where we do great community work. And so I will start with my question, my statement first. LAUSD recently removed Black student population as a criteria for allocating Black Student Achievement Program, or BSAP funding, effectively ending its effort to prioritize the unique needs of Black students and address longstanding harm and neglect they endure in LAUSD. This is coming at a time when our Black students are still struggling academically, especially in regards to elementary school literacy, where 73% of Black scholars are not reading at grade level, and previous initiatives have failed to make any meaningful impact on racial disparities in student outcome data. The question is, do you think Black students should be prioritized in BSAP? What will you do to make sure that Black students receive targeted support and funding to uplift the achievement of Black scholars?
Yes, I do believe that Black students need the support throughout our district to be able to support that at school by school, and making sure that the administrators of those schools, the local leadership of those schools, are aware of that. There are programs that are put in place today that advocate the five tenants of that program, and making sure that there's evidence to be seen in every school within the board district that moves the needle, so that we have evidence as to how this funding, the $125 million plus the $10 million that we use for HEAT, continues to make the investment for our students. So the formula is to make sure, school by school, making sure that they are implementing the BSAP program with the tenants that are there, and then following up with evidence to see how the needle is moving, and whether or not it's supporting those students and showing the evidence on how the support is coming, whether it's through additional BSAP counselors, via PSW, via the curriculum that they're using to engage pedagogy with the students. So those are ways that tangibly we can see evidence that the needle is moving for Black students.
I have had the privilege of traveling the country over the past 10 years, Milwaukee, Chicago, San Diego, sitting in a room with folks just like yourselves, trying to find out what would be the best methodology to create something that is specific to one racial group, but yet beneficial to all students. And the Black Student Achievement Plan was born. I am proud to be one of the engineers of the Black Student Achievement Plan. I didn't just champion it, I was in a room with intellectual scholars, community-based social justice warriors to create this plan. So I have a major stake in making sure that it is successful. The issue now remains is, is it being implemented in a way that it should be? And I would venture to guess, no, as a candidate, I have traveled and spoke with many chapter chairs at most of these schools, some of them low performing, and they still have not implemented the Black Student Achievement Plan the way it should be. And that's a damn shame. That program has been implemented for over three years now. So to me, it's not a matter of what we need to do, it's a matter of what leadership needs to do. And we need to recognize that there is a lot of anti-Blackness going on right now, all right? And we need to recognize it as it is, bold-faced lies, covert and overt action to keep Black students, in particular, but all students, from engaging in progressive ideas and progressive learning.
Thank you both. We're going to now turn to submitted audience questions. We have collected your cards, but before we do that, let's thank our student and parent leaders who asked, who came up with our question. We're going to ask that we keep volleying and alternating between who starts each round. Our first audience question comes from Dani Ramos. It's about extended or expanded learning programs. How do you plan to champion and prioritize expanded learning programs in LAUSD, such as after-school and summer programs, to ensure that they are high-quality, equitable, and impactful for all students, especially those from underserved communities?
It's a difficult undertaking, because there's a culture and a climate of just not getting things done. I am a big proponent of LA's Best. I have had my students, you know, my children go through LA's Best, and it is just a phenomenal after-school program. There are programs that are outside of school hours that our students can take part in, but unfortunately, the process, a systematic way of making sure that our students stay engaged in that, and to make sure that our families are aware of that, is something that I was working on while I was the president of the Park Mesa High School Community Council. And that was, you know, 15 years' worth of work of trying to make sure that our community councils stay connected to our schools to help support and supply any type of program that would help benefit before or after-school learning. Unfortunately, it has always become a matter of, do we have money in the budget? Well, if we have $6.3 billion surplus, and we have a superintendent who spends $3 million on a defunct AI company, then we have to understand that our money is being wasted, and that we need to make sure that when his contract comes up, that we make him well-aware of that, and, you know, perhaps maybe he should take some time off and go through something somewhere else, because what he has done here has just not worked. And I will make sure that I will be that leader to emphasize that.
ELOP funds is one way to be able to extend the opportunity for after-school. We know that many students and families need childcare. We know that it provides the childcare but enrichment, and making sure that through surveys, that the enrichment is exactly what the student needs. Many schools have championed math programs during their time off to be able to meet the students where they are. So it is going to be opportunities during these extended-day programs to be able to champion for, whether it's math or science, to it be an extended day. But I think one of the ways is to partner with Wrexham Parks, real-time advocate of the city, working together with the school district, to be able to open opportunities in spaces to where they're partnering during these times where students and families need assistance, because when you go to work, you often want to have a space that's safe for your children and to know that they are learning and engaged during this time. So if it can match the need of the resources that are needed for our families, it will benefit, and it's a win-win situation. So it's providing opportunities for the city as well to partner with our schools during this time of extended learning, and making sure that the curriculum matches through feedback from our families, making sure what the needs are.
Thank you. Our second question comes from Dr. Michael Baty. What is your plan to address the 80% plus failure rate in mathematics and science for Black and Brown students? Sherlet, we'll start with you.
So of course, our math scores have not soared, and I think, again, it's the narrative that many of our students believe that they can learn math. And I think that's part of the start, is to start to help our students understand where they come from, and to know that math is a part of their history, and to know they can achieve it. Because oftentimes, you can survey our students, say math is hard, I can't do it. And therefore, once someone thinks something is hard, they won't be able to try or challenge themselves to do it. And so that's a part of being able to start with that. But to be able to break our classes down, our class sizes down, to be able to meet the needs of the students where they are, and saying, you know what, I need to provide this kind of infrastructure for the students to be able to do what they need to do, and providing in-class tutoring. So many of our students, once we find out where their levels are, being able to have push-in sessions where they're tutored in class, instead of having if they come after school, which oftentimes is a challenge, as mentioned before, many of our students can't stay after school. So being able to use resources to be able to tutor our students within the class, to be able to see the things that we need to see, to be able to decrease that 80% number.
When I was in high school, I had to take Algebra II, and I had a math teacher by the name of Mr. Upatie. Why do I remember this guy? Because he was of Indian descent. He was very smart, he was a brilliant man, he knew mathematics. But unfortunately, he just couldn't get through to me, and I didn't know why. Because it wasn't like I was scared of math, I knew math, and it wasn't hard, but I just could not get Algebra, because I just did not understand how this man was delivering it to me. One of the major issues is people like Dr. Beatty not being able to exercise his right to be able to come in as a vendor and demonstrate that he has a formula. We have a lot of brilliant mathematicians who are yearning to teach our students mathematics in a way where they can get it, but unfortunately, there's a lot of apprehension and pushback. So one of my priorities is to reach out to people like Dr. Beatty, to make sure that they are in our schools, using a model that he believes and that we see demonstrates these students can catch and be proficient in mathematics.
Thank you. Our next question is from a student, and it's about cellphone bans on campus. What are you going to do about some schools enforcing a no-cellphone-on-campus policy? I can keep it often in my backpack, but the surrounding area of my school is high in violent crime. I don't feel safe going to school and having no way of calling for help if something happens to me after school. if something happens to me after school.
It's insane. Just put it to you like that. I talk to my daughter, my wife talked to her, our daughter, to and from, while she's in motion, you know, from the bus to the school. Most of our students even have to use their cellphones to do the work they need to do in class because the IT infrastructure at some of our schools is lousy. So I, for one, am not a proponent of a ban on cellphones, until there are other programs in place that ensure, number one, their safety. I think a lot of collaboration can be made, instead of just outright coming up with a ban because, you know, students spend more time in their screens than they do anything else. Well, let's do something about changing the climate at our school so that they spend more time with their head in the books or on the blackboard as opposed to wanting to look at their screens. And another issue for me is emergency preparedness. You know, we've had a few earthquakes and, you know, a few aftershocks here and there. So tell me why you would want to take a child's cellphone and they not have any ability to defend themselves and/or communicate with their guardians or parents in the time of an emergency? So we really haven't thought this through. I'm willing to listen and help initiate some solutions towards that. But right now, no bans.
So cellphones. So study and research shows the use of the cellphones has caused many of the concerns that we talk about today. And so we want to be able to, and I support the ban of a phone during instructional time because it takes away and distracts. My son does not have a phone, and he's doing very well. I think there's ways to communicate with your children. Whether on the way to school and you have a cellphone, that's fine. But when school starts, it's distracting you from the educational learning that you need. The phones are, it's addictive. It is research-based and shown, the phone use is addictive. Addiction, if you know, it controls portions of your brain that you have no control over. So addiction is real, and we need to be able to address it as such and educate our children that it is addictive behavior that we're practicing when we can't get off the phone. And so when a cellphone ban is implemented, how it's going to be implemented, we're going to need to be community-driven to do it. It has to be family. All stakeholders have to be involved to help understand why the phone is not going to be shown during instructional time. It's not that we're taking it away from you during your way to school and your way from school, but instructional time and even some of your recreational time, it is necessary to engage in human interaction, which we did 20 years ago, and it did us very well. And so it is important for us to understand as a community, in order for us to reach our students and be the best that we can for them, is to understand the effects that are coming from the cellphone usage or over-usage for that matter.
Thank you. Our next question is focused on equity and equity for special needs students in particular. I would like to know how each of the parties feel about the all-inclusive curriculum and what they are going to do to make sure that our special needs children don't get left behind. Sherlet, we'll start with you.
This is so important. And again, it goes back to our budget. Many schools were affected just in this recent past with our inclusive classroom and having dual educators within a class and not having the appropriate number of students to be able to have this inclusive number, which is important to be inclusive. However, the budget oftentimes doesn't match. And oftentimes, our leadership of the school who creates the budget does not know how to create a budget in order to encompass our inclusive classroom settings. And so part of it is, again, educating our leadership to know what it would take and to be conservative in when you're planning ahead, to make sure that you are able to provide the inclusive classroom that's needed for our special education bus and to be able to thrive. Because otherwise, we cut, we cut programs within a school setting after schools have started because we don't have the budget in order to continue it. And so I think a part of that is educating our leaders, because we do have new leaders in those roles. And then to remind them, as we do need to provide for each and every one of our students, and then to revisit it, to make sure that this setting is working for each and every individual in those class settings.
We're not listening. Going back to the Parent Advisory Committee, I remember, you know, we had put the post-it notes up on the wall, and it's like, this is what we need to do. We uplifted those individuals who were in the Parent Advisory Committee, who were either experts in the field or just parents who had a special needs child. And we just didn't listen. We know what they need. They need more behavioral interventions. We need to find other ways, this suspension, to get these students to be able to maintain themselves in a classroom environment where it's conducive to learning. I am proud to have a daughter, my oldest daughter, who teaches special needs. And we have conversations, and a lot of it is centered around behavioral issues. And so if we do not support and resource those areas within special needs, and that includes educators, I mean, I've got a chance to talk to a few educators who are in special needs, and most of them are long-term subs. Most of them are not being paid and benefited in a way where they feel it's even substantial to even continue being a special needs educator. So the fielding of itself is pretty much collapsing on itself because we are not listening. We have the solutions. We have the money. We just do not have the wherewithal to make it happen. And that's the type of leadership that I can bring.
Thank you. This question is from Alicia Jackson at St. John's Community Health. How do you plan to collaborate with community health organizations and local clinics to enhance the services offered at school-based wellness centers? Start with you.
You know, I feel it in my own heart, even though I didn't get a chance to fully work in it, but yeah, healthcare is essential to anything in life, basically. If you are not feeling well and then things are not working well for you, you're going to have issues. So it's so great to have wellness clinics on our campus. We need more. We need to continue investing in that area. We need to continue collaborations with LA County Health to make sure that things like when the pandemic hit, that there's information out there. So it's just a lack of information, and everything is just medicine-based treatment. But there are other ways to deal with a lot of issues in the healthcare field that affect learning. And so wellness clinics, full-time nurses at all our schools. I mean, that's not a novel concept. That's what should happen. That's what we should have. And then, if we cannot find one in Los Angeles or California, let's look elsewhere. Let's find those professionals who are researchers and medical doctors or practitioners so that they can also come into LAUSD and help our students succeed.
Wellness centers, those are very essential to our community. We want to continue to expand those partnerships and to create them at as many schools as possible. Opening up wellness centers have been one of the things that I definitely would love to see continue because I know the value that it brings to families. I know as a former athletic director, being able to have a student come to school and get a sports physical right at school benefits you 100%. So we would work even with outside clinics, like the T H E clinic that would come into our school sites, even if we didn't have a wellness center. So it would show the community that this is needed, and then finding the resources to be able to bring it permanent to the school site. So partnership with wellness centers is essential for our students and our families because it makes life a lot easier to be able to bring the resources to a space where, again, we talked about chronic absenteeism, where you're missing school because you have to take your loved one, you don't want to to a clinic. Well, this clinic is right there at school. So you may miss a period, but you're able to go right back to class. So I think those opportunities, once we continue to partnership with them, will be a great thing to expand throughout the district.
Thank you. Our next question is a student question about belonging, community, and engagement at school. Schools in LAUSD are taking away all senior activities. How do you plan on investing in seniors and their final year in school? We'll start with you.
They're taking away your senior activities? I don't know how that happened. It may be a consequence to something. You're talking to a dean now. So as a dean, you may have the consequence of a senior activity removed because there was an action that was taken. And I'll be one, I'm not going to say, yeah, we're going to just encourage poor behavior. But at the same time, I don't know. I don't know the circumstances to that question. But I don't think senior activities should be removed just because there's no resources. I think we can find resources to provide senior activities in proms and homecomings and, you know, activities as such. And leadership, I think, as well. Our seniors are the leaders on our campuses, and they need to be the role models. They should be the ones mentoring our freshmen coming in and making sure that they're setting the example. So hopefully, that's what's happening at the school sites and that they're the ones that we can look to for leadership and guidance for our freshmen as they come in. So unfortunately, I don't know why they would take away your senior activity unless it's a consequence for an infraction of some such along the way. So hopefully, we're doing our very best as seniors because you guys are the pioneers of the class.
Our student leader who asked that question is sitting there. So afterwards, he'll give you some context, but we'll go ahead and allow candidates. Oh, and you will too. All right, we got a student and a parent. He'll give you some context after that. All right, go ahead.
One of the reasons why I, back in the day, wanted to go to school is because it was just the school spirit, and I was proud to be from the land. You know, that's what got me of it. Five o'clock in the morning was to get the coffee cake too.
Also, you can get the coffee cake recipe online.
Yeah, hey, see, that'll get you up in the morning, you know, if anything. But for me, it's school spirit. I mean, I'll sit back and I look around and I look at my, what I lovingly call my nieces and nephews. All right? Because I really believe in you, and I really do love you. All right? I see what you're going through. I see what you have to watch. There's no school spirit. Everything is about discipline. Everything is about testing. And if you don't do it, you get disciplined or you get penalized for it. Schools should be fun, especially high school. You're becoming a young adult, you know? So your mind should be free to understand what it is to become an adult. The less restrictions that you have on your freedom of expression, and I'm not meaning to just get on out there and go buck wild like some of this nonsense we see in the streets. Some of this nonsense we see in the streets is because we're not giving them that freedom to be themselves. We tell them how they should act. We tell them what they should act. We tell them how to wear, what they want to wear. But each generation is different, and we have to respect the fact that they're coming into their own. I have to respect the fact that my children, 17, 18, are coming into their own. That doesn't mean that I don't discipline them or I don't give them advice or guidance. The issue is, how do you mentor a young adult into adulthood without damaging or traumatizing their growth? And I think that sometimes, even as parents, we try to project our own, and we shouldn't do that. We should project our own identities on them.
Thank you. I wasn't joking. You really can get the LAUSD coffee cake recipe online. It's world famous. It's really good and super easy to make. Okay. Last question before we transition to closing remarks comes from a parent of a Kipster, Ophelia Ramos. Her student is a Kipster at Kip Academy of Opportunity. Given the increased scrutiny and changes in the charter school renewal process post AB 1505, what measures will you take to ensure that high-achieving charter schools are not unjustly penalized and are supported and continuing to serve their communities? We'll start with you.
Real simple. Don't hurt the traditional school that you may be co-located on, and feel free to allow or share. Let's replicate that success with those schools that are low-performing, that don't have the success that's, you know, could really benefit our students. It's not hard, really. Charter schools used to be innovative and creative, and then it became profit-driven. It was more about putting butts in seats and making some money as well as academic achievement. And so for me, it's just a matter of looking at an application and saying, hey, this school is, you know, it's doing it. It's really making it happen. Okay, is there some kind of way where we can brother or sister that school? You know, with another school to make sure that that academic achievement just doesn't stay in one area, that this school is better than that school because it has the resources, it has the educators, and the leadership that makes that school successful? Let's share. Let's replicate. And then the big issue is the paying of fees. LAUSD has not collected the fees from the charter school industry in quite some time. So there's a major debt that is being owed that has kind of hampered LAUSD in being able to administrate supports and give resources to schools that are in need. So we have to recognize that fact, not point fingers or assess blame or, you know, tell somebody they shouldn't exist. Let's share. Let's share the wealth.
Wait. Sherlet, go ahead. Hold on. Go ahead.
Okay, so within our schools, definitely wanting to make sure that the accountability tool, as mentioned, the renewal process is arduous, and we want to make sure that it's equitable. Up until now, and honestly, until September 26, a lot of things were revealed to us in the board meeting that allowed us to see some transparency, which we hadn't seen in a very long time. And so I think in order to move forward, we have to continue to be transparent and to hold each other. And I say each other, meaning that schools that provide institutions for our children and our families accountable. And we want to be held accountable to the same standard. Unfortunately, because of certain local controls and some state funds, things were not always held accountable, and things were not as transparent as it should have been within the schools. And so we want to make sure we're providing opportunities for our communities to have choice, but we want to hold each other accountable. We want to make sure they're providing what they need to provide in sense of academics and sense of safety and sense of anything that, which in LAUSD were held to, same is held for our charter schools. And so we don't want to pit each other against each other, which has happened over the years. And we want to provide for our communities safe environments that are thriving, that are doing well. And as mentioned, the high achieving, we want to make sure those that are high achieving, yeah, they're honored to stay, quote-unquote, for better lack of a word, on the road. And then those that are not, they're not cutting the bill to do the things that they stated that they would. And we have to figure out a way to improve them, giving them time spans, and then obviously acting on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's say thank you to the candidates for answering our questions and engaging tonight. I also want to say thank you to each of you for your respectful engagement as we close out. Each candidate will now have two minutes to provide their closing remarks, and we will begin with you, Sherlet.
Well, again, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to be able to share, to be able to share my sentiments on how I feel about this district and how I feel about this community. And then being a person who checks the box as a parent, as a teacher, as someone who has invested in this community, as well as someone who is of immigrant descent, whose family can feel the pressures that many of our students feel within this community. And so with that being said, I want to say thank you to those that have endorsed me to get to this point because they believe in me, they believe in the opportunity that I bring to this board. And I also want to say, I want to be the next person and be the voice for many of you here to be able to champion for our students, our communities, and again, to champion-
champion for my own, which are in this community as well. So thank you for this opportunity to be able to share my advantage and my viewpoints on what it means to me to be a fighter for students in Board District One. Thank you.
I will not let a little bit of controversy dull my shine. I've been doing this for 20 years. I became a parent activist after I got my butt kicked by the police in 2004 on June 10. And ever since that day, I said, I'm not going to let them face the same thing that I faced, potential jail time and being humiliated by state sanctioned terrorism. So my crusade has always been about making sure that the next generation has what they need to succeed, not just my own children, but their friends, because I love them too, you know? I know their families. We're all family, and that's the way that LAUSD should be, but it's not. I know that there's some things out there that have been said about me, they are untrue. I have never, ever disrespected any ethnic group, individual, or group. And I want you to know that even after that despicable and disrespectful article, I stand before you even more confident than I was when that happened. And for the simple reason is that I've been through worse and I expected this to happen. So do your research. Don't just take what someone says, especially external folks, because it's not about anti-Semitism or anti-blackness. It's about your resilience. It's about your perseverance. No matter what you go through, each and every one of us has the ability to be successful. If we sit back and we forget about what solidarity means, what unity means, then that's how we end up being divided. LAUSD should not be divided.
Thank you all again for joining us tonight for this important discussion. We appreciate both of you for making time and for joining us. As we've talked about this evening, LAUSD is responsible for serving 420,000 students, the majority of whom are children who need additional support, resources, and a loving learning environment. There's a lot of weight on the shoulders of district leadership that's inclusive of teachers and principals, the superintendent, and the school board, and we know that it is not easy. So thank you for raising your hand and being willing to serve. We ask that you all continue to open the door for ongoing conversation with the folks who are here tonight and with other important community partners who are just as invested in our young people's success. To our audience, remember that mail-in ballots will arrive soon. You can return those by dropping them off at any ballot box. Remember that they must be postmarked by 8:00 PM on election night, which is Tuesday, November 5. There are also over 400 convenient and secure ballot drop boxes around throughout the county, and you can easily find those online when y'all are looking up that coffee cake recipe. Also, look up your drop box location.
Contest.
Actually, yes. I'm happy to be a judge for the coffee cake contest. You may also vote at the nearest LA County Voting Center near you. You may find those online at the LA County Registrar's page at lavote.gov. Thank you all again for spending your Friday Eve with us, for engaging so respectfully and for listening attentively. We wish you safe travels home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, one more thank you. That's to Olga, our timekeeper, for keeping us running seamlessly so you all could get out of here on time. Thank you.